Welcome to the public. We'll have our superintendent's report, correspondence of board comments. We'll then have the consent agenda.
Did we pass out?
I have.
Do we have any back? No? Okay. We will then have a second executive session, followed by adjourning the meeting. We do have a couple corrections to the agenda tonight. On the consent agenda, 10.04 instructional personnel agenda, on pages five and six, Amy Frazita is listed as a special education teacher, however, she's a general education teacher. And Heather Winter and Kate Hines should both be listed as special education teachers. Also on the consent agenda, 10.13 approved collection bargaining agreement with the BTA. That's listed on the agenda as a one-year successor agreement, however, it is a two-year agreement. And lastly, 10.15 first reading of policies, policy 8635 information security breach and notification. That policy has been added to the agenda. Do we have any student or school presentations tonight? Any parent groups? Open to the public. I think I can read the book from here. Ms. Pavlock. You are.
Well, you're pretty good.
Talented, huh?
Can I move this to the center way?
I'm sorry?
Can I move this?
Sure. Put it on the ti- there.
Well, let me start with the easy invite, I guess. Well, let me, the introduction first. My name is Dennis Pavlock, Beacon resident. Every year for the last five years, we've been, we've been a part of a event at City Hall. It's not a City Hall themed event. We're just using City Hall as a part of the holiday event. Once again, you're invited to the July 4th event at City Hall and July, July 4th, City of Beacon, 11 o'clock in the morning, 1:00 municipal plaza. So we'll just leave it all there. It'll be a great turnout. We'll get some, we have some surprises, so we'll see what happens. For my comments tonight, I, let me start, then I'll go backwards. On Thursday, May 7th, three different events, not good events happened in Dutchess County in the area, in the immediate area. There was a bank that was robbed. There was a carjacking, and something else, which I don't know, I forget. Three different events that were going, that went on that day. Shooting shuts down I-84. Shooting shuts down I-84. Justifiable shooting, I should say. You couldn't back up fast enough to get home, let alone drive forward and get to where you had to go. Everything was shut down, closed off, blocked off in any, in any way and every way. This brings me to my concern. The carjacking person attempted to get a ride from a Beacon High School student, which happened to be one of my friend's from high school's daughter. I don't know what happened, but she said, "I'm not going nowhere. I don't know what to tell you. I don't, I'm not here blaming the school district. I know you did the right policy," whatever it was, whatever you had to do. I'm not saying you did anything wrong. I'm not trying to infer that or even say that. However, I know we do a, every year we do a drunk driving in a parking lot here. I intended that one year. By the way, my comments need no comment back, no answers back. I wanted to say that. And I, as I looked around, I saw a few students, you know, you know, I said to them, I said to them, "What are you laughing at?" Beacon High School student here, her last name was Dolphin on Chelsea Road. Telephone pole, all I see is a bindin' of flowers surrounding a telephone pole. I think we need to go to the telephone pole on Chelsea Road to show them why all of her friends bring flowers, why they're putting flowers around the telephone pole. Because they don't think it's serious enough in a parking lot when we have an accident, a rec, a, a display accident here in the parking lot. Maybe we should take it one step further and go to the hospital and go to the morgue. After the hospital, we should go to the morgue. Let me see how many people are smile, students are smiling in about it. Bother's me. As well as the tests, good old Common Core, Melinda and Bill Gates, they should've gave me the $417 billion. I'd have showed what to do with it. Assemblywoman Aileen Gunther, Democrat of Forestburg, is calling for a moratorium on state testing for special needs children with individualized education program, they're IEPs. This is what she wants to ha- have happen. Somebody said, "So what happened to the kids with special needs?" They were offered state tests as well. Well, they were given more time to complete them, and that according to Gunther is just wrong. Why not have state tests manufactured to their abilities? Gunther's asking for experts, including special education teachers themselves, to finally be given time to address the issues to develop appropriate standards. Teachers and administrators also want more time to implement the redesigned teacher and principal evaluations. Then the state's nearly 700 school districts have a November 15 deadline, we must know that, put their evaluation system in place, otherwise they run a risk of losing their state and increase for the next school year. At the Learning Summit, Neil O'Brien, president of the New York Council of Superintendents, pointed out that evaluation system has already gone through so many revisions that now we're at 4.0 by our counting, and we should step 5.0 if not far off. I'm guessing the people that make these tests, create these tests, need to hear from someone like me, not on the telephone, because they can always go like this. That's a mistake. Because I'll drive to your office, and I'll stay there until you listen to me. I believe that's what we need to do, more of.
Thank you, Dennis.
One more 30 seconds, I'm like, turn that one up.
You're at six minutes.
I did?
Yeah. I can show you.
Yeah. Can I?
Please.
Thank you. This last, this last student here, you should be safe in school. Samantha Sherbo, Monticello High School. This, this student, this female student, she said, "There's a history of this boy who's uh, bothering her in school, bullying her. He was an acquaintance who overpowered her, sexually assaulted her on three occasions two years ago, once near a water tower on school property." The Sullivan County District Attorney's Office, seeing the same evidence, charged the boy, now 18 at the time, with 17. First degree harassment, and Monticello Village Court granted the order of protection in favor of Samantha. District Attorney Jim Farrell confirmed that the complaint charges with the boy conducted and includes going into Samantha's classroom, waiting outside the classroom, hovering over her, engaging in verbally abusive behavior, cursing at her on one occasion, chasing her out of the school, onto the bus. How come the DA's office brings charges in the school and the school did nothing? I'm wondering about the same. I'm not saying we have this going on here, but if we have to wait, if we have to wait for students that are being bullied until we start the new bullying prevention program in September, what happens to those students that are being bullied now until we start the prevention? They have to wait, they have to wait as well until September starts. In the meantime, they have to stay quiet, or whatever the case may be with being bullied, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joaquin Rager, and I'm a grandparent to the district. And I first want to thank whoever should be thanked. My grandson just participated in the SHARP overnight, and what an amazing experience for these kids. It just was really, really, so thank you for that. Secondly, Dr. Walkley, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Look forward to anything you could put online, because it's the only way for us to disseminate some information that is factual. And thirdly, I have a question that maybe we can't answer tonight. The format of the school board meetings, which is you have something at the beginning, and then there's a private discussion that needs to take place, that comes in the middle of it, and then the meeting continues. And I'm wondering if that doesn't end up discouraging parents who might come out and try and participate, which I think would be an incredibly good thing if more parents were out and listening and active. And I don't know if there's some way that that could be turned around so that either that happened at the end, or it happened at another time, or it happened beforehand, because parents, you know, people rush out of the house, and they come to the meeting, and then we end up sitting around for a while. And the last thing that maybe somebody could answer, because I'm just naive on this, is that there are a whole bunch of resolutions here. If somebody wants to know more information about them, how would I go about that? Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
Kim Atwell, President of the Beacon Teachers Association. In my time here as the BTA president, it has always been the union's position to work collaboratively, collectively with the district to do what is best for our students. And therefore, I do not foresee an issue with getting our teachers to come together and work with the district this summer. I know, Kenya, you have some concerns about that. Certainly tomorrow, on Wednesday, we are having a district advisory meeting with the district, the administrators, and the union representatives from each of the buildings. And I know the plan is for us to present some information around the education policy and some of the work that needs to be done moving forward. The good thing here is I think that teachers and administrators, we really value what happens here in Beacon, and we try to insulate ourselves from all of the rhetoric and all the politics that go on, you know, outside of, you know, our bill, our, our district, although it does impact us, I think we need to be connected to it, but also not be so influenced by it that it's a deterrent for us. So I, I don't think there's going to be a problem with getting folks to come in. It may not be the same people every single time, but we certainly will get enough folks to come in to work together. So we are ready for some of the implementations that will, will hit the ground running on June 30th. And after today's meeting, you know, I will certainly share some information with the teachers around some of the compelling information that was shared today at the forum. In addition, I am currently participating on an education advisory committee, which is a board, two Senators Serino in the 41st District. And this, this committee is comprised of superintendents, principals, parents, union leaders, teachers, and we are, the plan is to meet on a monthly basis. We've already met once, and we've been working via email with Senator Serino, and there's going to be another meeting in July and, and in August. And the purpose and the intention is to, to advocate from, you know, the people that are in the trenches and some of the issues around the new education policy, specifically around the implementation, which is, again, it's not, it's, it didn't work the last time, and so they're making the same mistakes over and over again. So we're really trying to push forward with getting folks up at the department to, to start to pay attention and do it in a way that is, is positive, and so people can really have a true understanding of what we're trying to do. Lastly, I'd like to just recognize, and I want to, I want to say that I appreciate the collaboration again with the district regarding collective bargaining and the negotiations process. It's, it's not an easy process. It's hard for folks to really understand what, what goes on at the table. Health insurance obviously is a big issue in the country, and, and we're, we're not removed from that. But I, I can appreciate the work that we've been able to do. I thank Mr. Blammer and the Squateroni and Dr. Walkley for the work at the table with the team. So I appreciate all your, thank you.
Thanks. Sorry. Hi, my name's Robin Wood. I'm a mom in the district. I just have a quick question, kind of piggybacking on what, what Joaquin was saying earlier. I was wondering, it's, and I know you guys are all out and all have families, so I don't, you know, whatever, but it's been real difficult to get here for those of us who have husbands commuting, because, you know, the last, the earliest train you catch is like the 5:08 and still getting in at like 7:13 sometimes. And I was wondering if there was any way for next year, maybe to, if there was any way to start, maybe 7:30, just to put it out there.
So, just to respond to what I can right now, I will put the PowerPoint on, online on the Beacon website. And the format of the meeting is determined through board policy, and that's one policy actually that we just approved. So to change the format would, would take to change the policy, just for that piece of information. If you need more information on some of the resolutions, the place to start, a call to the board clerk would be a good place to start. There may be information that could be foiled, or maybe it's something that we can just answer. Or you can ask it at the podium, you know, during, during your time at the podium, you could ask that question as well.
Okay, it's time for your superintendent's report.
All right, for the superintendent's report tonight, a couple different things. First, we are engaging with Carley's Crusade Company, and we're developing a relationship with them, which will continue into next year and probably into the future. Carley's Crusade is an organization that does presentations for both parents and children. And their main presentation, of course, is around students being safe. It's around abduction, which is actually one of the required unfunded mandates from the state that we need to teach about. And however, they also do other types of presentations as well. And with the students, there is a verbal presentation as well as a presentation where children get to try out a few different techniques, and they do that in gym classes. So we will have that coming next year, but I just wanted to say thank you to Dennis, who has passed, but he's the person who originally put me in touch with the organization, and we've had some really great presentations for parents this year. We will repeat those presentations next year, and I'm hoping to get more parents to come. They are excellent presentations. I would like to also share that Mrs. Olive, who was here earlier this year with her son Liam, who was recognized as a wrestler at Beacon, who has a, has lost a leg, and there was a piece done on him through the internet. He also has a team for the Relay for Life that was put together by Liam, and they attended the Relay for Right, of Life and raised money. And this was a thank you note from her, thanking the teachers and the students, and, you know, I think the best line is, you know, "Thanks again to each of you and all the students that let their time to make this relay both special and successful." And she says that there are, she's very proud that her son goes to school with so many caring young adults, so a nice thank you note from her that I want to share. And then I also wanted to just share an update on our, both our building and our district level safety plans. Before I do that, I did want to respond to say that, I call it the chaos day, the day of the shooting, the stabbing, and the bank robbery, the armed robbery. We did have a great debrief meeting. We invited the police to attend that meeting with us, and we talked about what happened that day, and what we could do differently, and how we might, how that might affect our plans, as well as the, the plans of the police in the future. So, at our next board meeting, Kelly will be putting out a formal notice that we will be having a formal hearing for the district and, the summary of the district plan and the school's safety plans. One of the things that you need to know is that part of the information in these plans is proprietary. Of course, it's, it's not put out there so that everybody knows, "Oh, there's a, you know, this is where they're going to go if this kind of thing is happening." So, but we do have on the website both the summary of our school's safety plans and the district-wide plan. And if you're interested or so inclined, please take a look at that, because at our next board meeting during the hearing, it's an opportunity for people to comment or share information. We, by law, we have to have the plan approved by the board by July 1st, and our next steps with our safety plans are as followed. By the way, the district plan did not change this year. We did hold a district-wide committee meeting, but the district plan did not change, but we did come up with ideas for the building level plan, but the summary of the plans have not changed. So our next steps are, we're going to hold the hearing on June 22nd. There will be a board adoption hopefully that evening. There's going to be some summer training for the administrative team. There will be a fall review with the full, the full district level team, and then the building level teams will also be reviewing their safety plans, and that needs to happen by April 1st by law. And then we will, once again, post a hearing and an adoption by July 1st. So if you'd like to influence the thinking of those committees, if you have some thoughts, take a look at the plans and come with suggestions or comments or questions the next week. That's it? Thank you.
Do we have any board comments tonight?
I just have a report on the policy committee meeting, and I have just two board comments. Is anyone?
Yep.
Okay, so the Board of Education has a policy committee. It's a subcommittee of the board. It includes Mrs. Gadsden, Mrs. Thompson, and Mrs. Patchen and myself. We meet at the district office. Dr. Walkley attends, Mrs. Kellogg, and any other members of the board or public who would like to join us are welcome. The meeting dates are posted on the website. I've been having a lot of people ask me how to find out about those meetings, so I just wanted to announce that here for anyone who's watching. At our last meeting in May, we intended to review three policies. The attendance policy, the information and security breach policy, and the wellness policy. So some policies that are reviewed are reviewed by district-wide committees, which include community members. Some policies are simply reviewed by the board's subcommittee. Once the committees are reviewed, the policies are reviewed, they come to the policy committee, we work with them, and we then recommend a policy to the board. The board reviews it. It's on the board agenda one time. That's called the first read of the policy. So you'll see on our agenda tonight, there are some policies that we are reading for the first time. Those policies are available for the public to look at on the website, and generally they're available on the table as well. And the public can comment at the policy committee meeting. They can comment at the board meeting during the first read, or even during the second read. After the second read, the board will take a vote as to whether that's a policy we will approve or not approve. A lot of people have questions about that, and I've been trying to share that information, so I'll say that again. I'm sorry for people who kind of already know how that works. So again, we intended to review the attendance policy, information, security breach, and wellness. The attendance policy took us a little bit longer. It's a very detailed policy. There was a lot of work we had to do on it. So we tabled the discussion and review of the wellness policy. That will be reviewed at our next meeting. So tonight, we're going to just be reading the attendance policy, so anyone who has questions or comments can ask us. And the information and security breach. Tuesday, June 16th, 6:30 at the district office. It's sort of a, a first floor room around the left side of the building, if anyone's looking to join us. We will be reviewing the wellness policy, which was already reviewed by a district-wide committee, including community members, teachers, administrators. In addition, we have a few other policies we'll be reviewing. Continuing work is being done on the code of conduct through a district-wide committee, similar to the wellness committee. That's also something that will be presented through a public forum, and we will be voting on by July 1st. That's a requirement that we have the code of conduct updated annually. So those are the updates from the policy committee. I did just have two questions. One had to do with an update on the application for the Jehovah's Witnesses for the tax exemption. Is there anything to report to the public at this time on that?
Yes. We were notified by the town of Fishville that the Rivercrest Apartments will give a 44% exemption, tax exemption. So how that will affect us is the tax assessment will go forward into the 2015-16 school taxes. So right now, that amount equates to about $300,000, so that would get re-levered to the rest of this residents of City of Beacon School District.
Thank you. And then the only other question I had is, we get a newspaper from the Board of Ed and New York State School Boards Association. One of the things that we had been asking about, other board members had asked about it too, was the smart schools bond. And I understand from reading that newspaper article, which isn't always completely accurate, I guess, that some guidelines have been put forth at this point, and that there's some timelines in place, and I was wondering if there were any updates on that. But if you can't answer now.
Well, we've read through, and we know the timelines. We were trying to formulate the information, but I don't have a, a formal report, which I probably could bring forward, maybe in the next meeting, give you an update.
Is there a committee on, like, in place for that, or is that just administrators working with teacher, like, is it administrators now? Like, how are you determining what the plan is?
We just, we just finished updating the technology plan. So there is a sitting committee for, for technology.
Any other comments?
Oh. Finished with it. Josh?
Yes. (laughing)
Creating a culture of care and respect will meet Wednesday night, June 10th, at 7:00 PM at Beacon High School. This committee is part of, one of the committees that was formed to assess the dropout rate in the district. So we will have a survey. We are asking the community to please, please come out and, and help us gather the numbers and get information from you that will better aid us in trying to move forward. get information from you that will better aid us in trying to move forward. I'm asking the board to consider, nothing that needs to take action tonight, a meet and greet of the Board of Education team so that the community gets to know us a little better and what we do. I wanted to know the status on the Maris College Partnership Program. That has been one of my things before I got on the board, so I just want to see it to the end, before the end of the year. Christina already asked my Fishkill question. And my other one was just a response to Ms. Atwell. I am vote pro all the teachers in this district, the teachers that I work with, that have worked with my children, in addition to the teachers that I have not worked with, but just helped them along the way, or they helped me along the way. My question was not whether or not they would do it. I think they would do it whether they get paid or not because they're so dedicated to the children of this district. My question really was, if they don't reach an agreement, what do we do? What kind of action do we take? And so I just needed to know that moving forward in case they needed my hand to write something, you know? So it was nothing against the teachers in this district because I love them and, you know, I try to show them that teacher appreciation are not weak. And that's it.
I can answer that question. You know, actually, the state has taken away a lot of the decisions that, or a lot of the negotiation pieces of the, under this new legislation. So the decisions that need to be made are nowhere near the decisions that were once made. So I have every bit of confidence that if we can come to agreement on the more complex, which are now taken away, that we will be able to come to agreement.
Anyone else?
I attended the Dutch County School Board Association meeting. It was a reorg meeting and Frank went with me. Thank you very much for that, Frank. We had a guest speaker, Assemblywoman Dee Dee Barrett, attended there. So it was nice to have, for her to listen to us and get input from, there was various board members from the Dutch County districts, as well as a couple of superintendents there, pretty much expressing our concern about the new PPPR and the timelines. She did mention that there are a couple of bills going through both the Senate and the Assembly. The Senate one postponed everything by a month. Big deal. One month is not going to make any difference, but the Assembly version is, I think, a full year. So that's a more realistic one. So she recommended that everybody, you know, let their senators and Assemblymen persons know that the timeframes that the state is currently forcing on, not only the district, but the state education department, really is way too short. I mean, the state education department's already admitted that it's too short, that they said, it's the law though, so we're going to do it, whether, you know, we have to. But they're repeating the mistakes of the last time where they rushed things and they're being forced to rush things again. So if we can get it delayed, the other thing that was discussed was the fact that if the timelines stay, we're going to be operating under two sets of standards. One set of standards for the first half of the year and another set of standards for the second half of the year. And until we get guidance, we won't even know how you, how that works out. Do you take the average? Do you forget the first? Who knows? So everybody's concerned about the fact that the state seems to forget that the school year is not the same as the government's fiscal year. And so they tend to throw these things out there without enough thought and so it'll be another challenge. And kind of hoping if they, if they do pass the bill, it gives another year, that will be a lot more reasonable time period, but we'll have to see what happens there.
I just had a correction. I announced the old date for the policy committee meeting. We will be meeting on Tuesday, June 23rd at 6:30.
Tracy, you have something?
I did. I just wanted to make the comment that last week I attended the sports awards and Mr. Nemechek left, but I just wanted to publicly comment that I thought he did a fantastic job, especially given the long history of the formerly known as Eric Romanino Show. So I thought he did a great job and I thought it was a wonderful event and I'm thanking him again. And I look forward to the same type of activity tomorrow with senior awards.
I would just like to thank Dr. Seberdin for bringing our special guests tonight and congratulate both our valedictorian and salutatorian. I know we all look forward to their speeches on graduation day. I too attended the sports award. While they are a marathon event, he did a wonderful job stepping in for the first go of it and this is an exciting time for our students. You know, exams coming up certainly for our high school students and finals for our middle school students, but this is an exciting time and a time to celebrate with our kids. So really looking forward to this last couple of weeks.
And if I could also mention, and so many board members have attended different events and I try to attend as many as I can, we kind of finished up all the spring concerts and we've had a number of evenings of recognition of students for Honor Roll, the Honor Tea, the Honor Society. So a number of events and it's just great to see the students who participate in the athletics, the music, the singing, you know, all of those events. So they've all been wonderful and great.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda? Motion to approve consent agenda items 10.02 through 10.16. Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for executive session? Where is the addendum?
Hold that thought.
Oh, okay. No, I'll, this is the agreement. Do we have an addendum?
I just compared the agreement.
Not the addendum. Can we whip one up?
Should have boiled plate one by now, Mike.
How about I'll state it and someone can move it and second it?
Okay.
Resolved that the Board of Education approved the consultant services agreement with James Mullin, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting.
Motion. Second. Comments or questions?
Yeah, Ken. For the agreement, can we add in there that there be a written process that will be generated at the end of the agreement to follow for future references? I don't see that on any of the bullets for the service agreement. I don't know where it would fit.
And would that, but the question is, would, could that get done within the timeframe? I mean, if we're going to, if we're adding additional, if we're going to add additional work, I'm just questioning whether that can be done in the...
It's almost like a self-reflection piece of what he, what the consultant's going to be doing, so we don't have to continue with this consultant.
Well, I agree with you, it's just that if it's not something that he understood was to be done and I'm just concerned that if we're adding things that he doesn't know about, that three days might not be enough.
So we could, we could ask Dr. Seberdin to record that.
Right. Like, something like a step along the way as they're performing.
So as long as it's recorded, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and the board is not expected to take action during executive session.